Good evening and welcome to the February 7th Tuckahoe Board of Trustees Meeting. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
President.
Present.
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 Present, and we will begin with one appointment for today. The swearing in of Constance Kuttataki as court clerk. So can Connie come forward?
Is the judge here?
He's gonna be right there. Yes, she should come forward too. Yeah, they're gonna bring it. My, yes. Yes, you're right, but you should stand next to your mom. You're better off on the other side of her. Put your hand, your left hand on the Bible at this stage. We're just waiting for the judge to come forward. Can I ask everyone to please silence your phones? Camille, do you have another Bible? I could, yeah, yes.
There he is.
Okay.
I need two, thank you. Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of court clerk.
Of court clerk.
For the village court of Tuckahoe.
For the village court of Tuckahoe.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
That's for David. Yes. That's fine, yeah.
Oh, okay.
A short, a short.
Well, I actually have notes in case this happens, so.
So Connie, you can go to the mic now. You can give that to David. I don't know.
I wish that's it.
So it's short, but it's, it is very sweet and it's heartfelt. First of all, Madam Mayor, thank you. One of the many things that I love about working in Tuckahoe is that after five years, I'm still the new kid, which means that everyone stays, and I'm very happy to be here. I want to thank the board for their vote of confidence. I know some of you are new and you've been taking in a lot of information, so to have a vote of confidence in a position like this requires faith, and I appreciate that. Judge Fuller, I don't know, I don't have enough words for Judge Fuller. He has been an inspiration support for the last five years, and there's no way this would happen, and there couldn't be two finer gentlemen between Judge Fuller and Judge O'Toole to work for, and that means a great deal. I want to thank David Burke for his creative leadership, and I am a grateful beneficiary of his creative leadership, and Gary Gertson for being a lot of fun to work with. And the chief isn't here, but I want to say to the police that I'm really looking forward to working with them. In the last four, almost five years that I've been here, every interaction with the police department has been top-notch and excellent, and I know that we'll continue that. And then I also want to thank Jackie Ferretti, who is the center of the universe in Village Hall, so I want to thank her for her friendship and making me laugh every day. And last, I just want to talk about a sentiment and a standard that Judge Fuller has set in the court. You may not remember this, but my first Christmas here, he sent me a card and he spoke about grace and dignity facing the public. And we all know that the courts are critical to our society and how we create justice, but we also know that coming to the court is not usually a happy occasion. So we have a standard that Judge Fuller has set, dignity and grace to the public, and as your new court clerk, I will maintain that standard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure David wants to say a few words.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of things prepared, but I'm gonna change it up a little bit because I think what a lot of people don't know, Connie mentioned that she's the new person on the block, but she started here as a part-time employee, very valuable member of this organization, kind of took her out of the court for a little while and moved her into a position where she worked with myself, she worked with Ryan, she worked with kind of everybody in the village doing a lot of different projects. Look behind you, I mean, she spearheaded the, the update to the courtroom. That really looks great. That's just one of the many things that she was working on, so I think this is a fantastic choice. I think the board made an excellent pick. I think Connie's gonna do great things with this office, including things that she's already done with, certain programs that a lot of people don't see, but kind of the backend stuff for more efficiencies and all that kind of stuff. So congratulations, Connie. Looking forward to working with you in your new role, and I'm gonna miss you kind of working in my office, but we'll find someone.
Congratulations, Connie. Judge, would you go to the mic, because they can't hear you? Oh, yeah. Fines he'll collect, yes. Permit money he'll collect. Thank you. We do have one presentation today by the Juneteenth Committee on Black History Month. Would you please come forward now?
Good evening, oh, sorry. Good evening, neighbors, trustees, Mayor Andino. I'm Adrienne Michelle, 35, Washington Street. On behalf of Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee, we thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to first say Happy Black History Month to all, and now, although across the country and other parts of the world, February has been designated as Black History Month, but with an open mind and love in my heart, I'd like to exclaim that black people are creating history every day. They've been critical to our past and continuously are making history. A great example of that is right here in Tuckahoe. Madam Mayor Andino, you have contributed to historical changes here in Tuckahoe since becoming the first Afro-Latina mayor I know. It hasn't always been easy, and for sure, people disagree with you, and, and, you know, make big stinks instead of being compassionate about the new role that you have, but I want you to know, there are people here that's rooting for you. We are appreciative of you, and we want to thank you and let you know that you've been an inspiration to others.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your tenacity and your grace has been powerful, and we hope that your journey provides you with continued success and love from and for your constituents. No matter their political position, race, sex, or socioeconomic status, we thank you for your service. To trustee Kara Cronin, I want to thank you for your remarkable support for the day you stepped into office. Up until now, you have been very instrumental in helping form and get the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee off the ground, and your willingness to work side by side with us to get things done is immeasurable. For that, we are grateful. Next, you'll be hearing from two scholars from our town. I'm not sure, is Maiaja here? Okay. You'll be hearing from one of our scholars from Tuckahoe Middle School, 7th grade. Her name is Michaela Smith, excuse me, Michaela Moore Smith.
Hello, my name is Michaela Moore Smith, and today I will be talking about Mr. Reverend, Mr. Reverend Everett Stowe. Mr. Stowe moved in Tuckahoe in 14, in 1946 after losing his mother at an early age. His stepmother had an aunt who lived on 17 Maynard Street, and when she moved, she left his family, their apartment. He attended Tuckahoe High School three out of the four years there. He served as class president. Mr. Stowe recalled the teachers and being very supportive during his time there. He took classes in home economics and typing. A memorable moment in Tuckahoe High School was in his junior year when him and his teammates from the basketball team staged a sit-out because there were no black cheerleaders. It lasted the whole season. The following year of Mr. Stowe's senior year, his sister Catherine had earned her way onto the honor roll and became the first black cheerleader in the school. This was in 19, in the 1950s. After high school, he spent a couple of months in college and soon after had been drafted into the Air Force. He was thankful for the trades he learned in high school because it pretended, it prepared him once he got into the military. The fond memories Mr. Stowe has of Tuckahoe was the way the, the community stuck together. People were so willing to help each other and was able to live amongst each other without fear of others' beavies or background. There was no place for that in Tuckahoe. Things he would like to see in Tuckahoe now is more youth and adults involved in faith-based activities. As a reverend and longtime member, no matter where Mr. Stowe lived, Shiloh Baptist Church has always been a reminder, and remains his place of worship for him and his family. Thank you for your activism and contributions to our village, Reverend Stowe.
Thank you. Beautiful. Nice job, Michaela.
Yes, well done, Michaela. On behalf of the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee, we do have another speaker. She's on the way, got a latex, so hopefully she'll get a chance to present later because she was very excited and very encouraged behind this. But I will like to just take the time out to let everyone know you are all welcome to a few events that we'll be hosting at the Tuckahoe Community Center this month. On February 11th, we'll be having a movie night, excuse me, it's a documentary called Hidden Colors, and for the most part, it's geared towards adults, but we'll have activities for the children as well because we want to make it a family-friendly event. On Saturday, February 19th, we are doing a genealogy workshop at 5:00 PM, and the presenter is Joyce Cole of Peekskill. Then, then February 26th, we'll have a little reception with the DJ. We're gonna do a cook-off, and Mayor Andino, I know you love to cook, as well, you are a foodie, so we look forward to your, your entry for that event, and we'll have also refreshments, so we hope to invite everybody down. Again, the dates are February 11th, 19th, and February 26th, and I think our other scholar has walked in. Maiaja?
Hi.
Hi.
So Maiaja will also be presenting, and just to, I realized during my other speech, I didn't say what is, we were presenting, which is we decided to pick pioneers from the community to recognize and interview and discuss about who they are.
I understand that Mr. Stowe is on Zoom.
Mr. Stowe?
Would you like to say a few words, Reverend Stowe? Can you set up the next young lady? Hello, hello, Reverend Stowe?
Hello.
We can hear you.
You're on mute.
It's a packed house today. Is he on mute still? Can you unmute him? Okay. All right, Reverend Stowe, if you get, you figure out how to unmute, we'll come back to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say I appreciate all of the Tuckahoe villages doing. The times and days in which we're living, we need each other. As I said there, we need unity in the community, and this is what's gonna make us survive, and we look forward to better days coming for all people, not only just Tuckahoe, but all people.
Thank you. Okay, young lady? Can you tell us your name and?
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maiaja Lugg. I'm an 8th grade student at Tuckahoe High School. I'm here to talk about lovely, Ms. Lovely Bullops. I had the pleasure of interviewing the former Eastchester Community Action Program Director, the matriarch of this awesome village of Tuckahoe, and one of the first black models in the world, Ms. Lovely Bullops. Ms. Bullops' family lineage started in 1936 when her grandparents purchased their home in Tuckahoe, New York. There were business owners of the West Indian descent wanting a better uplifting neighborhood for their family. They moved from Harlem in Manhattan, New York to here, Tuckahoe, New York. Ms. Lovely Bullops expressed to me that she liked the close, the closeness of the community and the families we know each other. It was uplifting to her and the name of the neighbors alike that so many black families own properties in Tuckahoe. The diversity of the, of high street showed her how the world can be unified, as well as a lot of sports, unified people in her time. Football games that even Thanksgiving was held off. People held off the eating to play together in unity. Tuckahoe and East, and Eastchester Memorial Day Parade unified families of all races and ethnicities. Ms. Lovely Bullops calls upon the youth like me and others to draw our community together like past, like days of the past. In the words of Lovely, accepted differences without making it difficult. It was, it was with great pleasure to meet Lovely Bullops. I really enjoyed talking, taking the time out and interviewing her and learning more about Tuckahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the Juneteenth Committee for bringing forth and highlighting some people in Tuckahoe. So we have no public hearings today, just want to adopt the minutes. So may I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and there's a first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's an agenda item that anyone would like to come forward, please do so now. Hi, Donald.
Good evening, Mayor Andino, trustees.
Good evening.
Village attorney, administrator, clerk, and fellow residents. Did I forget anybody? The cameraman. My name is Donald Crosby, and I am the president of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. We have two missions to present this evening, the hunting, the keeping of honeybees and the planting of trees. We started talking about honeybees in 2020, and we have since proposed an ordinance which has been revised multiple times. The ordinance has been reviewed by the village attorney, the building department. The proposed ordinance is available on the tuckahoe.com website. We have taken a careful look at the safety of all residents regarding the possible location of beehives. There are specific requirements for the location. The building department will make the final approval. Registration is required using the Tuckahoe Beekeeper, Beekeeper Notification Form. This form must be submitted annually. As you may or may not know, there has been a hive on the roof of the Spring Hill Suites for 11 months. I was gonna say 10 months, but it's 11 months, and there has not been any problems. The board approved this on a trial basis. My colleague now will talk about the nature of honeybees.
Thanks, Donald. Good evening, and thank you all for having me. To be or not to be, that is the question. My name is Erin Provenzano, and I'm a member of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. I also happen to be a beekeeper and have been enjoying this hobby for four years this upcoming April. Tonight, I will be speaking to the board in regards to keeping honeybees in Tuckahoe. This ordinance would ensure proper management of honeybee hives kept by residents and/or businesses within the village. So why are honeybees important? Well, to quote the FDA, "Today, the commercial production of more than 90 crops relies on bee pollination." Of the approximately 3,600 bee species that live in the U.S., the European honeybee is the most common pollinator, making it the most important bee to domestic agriculture. About one-third of the food eaten by Americans comes from crops pollinated by honeybees, including apples, melons, cranberries, pumpkins, squash, broccoli, and almonds, to name just a few. Without the industrious honeybee, American dinner plates would look quite bare. And many people ask, are honeybees safe? Honeybees are typically gentle insects. Honeybees only sting when provoked, and most stocks that suburban beekeepers keep have been bred for gentleness. Honeybees die when they sting, so they only use their stinger when needed. This can happen if they are swatted, stepped on, or if their hive is disturbed. Bees in general are not aggressive, they're defensive. Their sting response is reserved for times that they feel threatened, so if you are intruding on their hive territory, or if you accidentally sit on one, you might get stung. Having bees next door will not increase the number of bees in your yard. Honeybees travel great distances to collect food. They routinely visit flowers up to three miles from their hive. Bees also tend to cruise at altitudes of 30 feet and higher, well above the space that people occupy. One yard does not have nearly enough flowers to support a honeybee colony. Around 2 million flowers are needed to make a single pound of honey, and colonies can make upwards of 100 pounds when conditions are good. Flowers have a finite amount of nectar and pollen, so regardless of where a hive is located, bees will only visit someone's yard when the flowers are inviting them with nectar and pollen. Bees get all of their food from plants. They are not scavengers or hunters like some other insects. Yellow jackets and wasps, on the other hand, are attracted to sugary sodas and some picnic foods. So usually when people say, oh, I don't like these, they're aggressive, these are what they're thinking of, yellow jackets and wasps. And another thing that a lot of people have concerns about are swarms. It is the suburban beekeeper's responsibility to do everything in their power to prevent swarms. This includes the following practices: providing additional hive bodies and supers in a timely manner as colonies grow or collect honey, giving each colony plenty of room to expand; splitting the strong hives; expanding the brood nest by placing alternating frames of empty drawn comb between the existing frames of the brood nest; and re-queening often with young queens. And that's all I have to say tonight, be well.
Thank you, and thank you to the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee task for, for this work and for all the work that you do in the village. Thank you.
The second mission is planting trees in Tuckahoe. Any Tuckahoe resident who would like to request a tree planting on their property near the curb or in the front yard should access the website tesc-tuckahoe.org or the Department of Public Works at 914-231-0214. By the way, you can learn more about honeybees with Erin's wonderful presentation, which is available at, on, at the TESC website, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I have, I have to say my favorite part of this presentation was watching your mom look up at you proudly, Erin. All right, we're gonna move on to resolutions. If you guys have, if you have any conversations, I'm asking that you please take them outside. So the first resolution, oh, sorry.
I was in the back.
No worries.
Joseph Scooter Scott, Ten Circle Road, and number one, I applaud the work of the task. As someone who started out in life looking to become a marine biologist, ecology is in the environment always been a big concern of mine, and whether people know it or not, we have a bee shortage in the world, and anything we can do to increase the population is a good thing, in my opinion. I have come up to address what I believe is an agenda item for this evening, which is the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I oppose it, and I would like to start by asking, why are we looking to adopt it? I believe trustee Howell, you brought this up last year, so I'll just take an answer from you.
So that, that will be addressed during her report? So you're welcome to make your comments and then she'll, sure.
I generally prefer to know why someone's doing something before I go spouting off at the mouth, but we can reverse it. I have several concerns, and I have a copy of it here. Ever since trustee Howell brought it up, I've been quite familiar with it. It has, I believe, good intentions, but we all know about a certain road being paved with good intentions. Not that this is necessarily going to take us there, but it could be something that has the potential in divisive times to do so. I see it as unnecessary because we have the Constitution, we have the Bill of Rights. Every single article that is in here, and I plan to go through some of them because I don't know if the people of the village are familiar with the contents of it, because you hear human rights and you automatically presume it to be good, but how many things have we heard with good names that have not been good? So, um, let's look at Article 1, "All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. They are endowed with reason and conscience, and should act towards one another in a spirit of brotherhood." Similar sentiments were expressed in the Declaration of Independence. So this is unnecessary. But furthermore, I remember last year, after having been campaigning in my neighborhood, which is close to trustee Howell's neighborhood I'm walking, and just, just to highlight something, it's, it's one of the things, I think it came up. It's one of the things, I think, it came up. You can't regulate people's hearts. And furthermore, any heart change in a culture is going to have to come from the ground up, not the top down. I saw some people walking down the street who were not supporters. Their house didn't... I said hello because they were walking and dog. We're neighbors at this point. Didn't even have the decency to say hello. This article, to quote Jesus, "strains out a gnat while swallowing a camel." Article 2. "Everyone is entitled to the rights and freedoms set forth in this Declaration without distinction of any kind, such as race, color, sex, language, religion, political or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. Furthermore, no distinction shall be made on the basis of the political, jurisdictional, or international status of the country or territory to which a person belongs, whether it be independent, trust, non-self-governing, or under any other limitation of sovereignty." All right, this is so broad. This is, this begins to address, or it highlights what this resolution was written for. It was written for national governments, not local ones. "Everyone has a right to life, liberty, and security of person." Okay, we have life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in the Declaration of Independence, and "security of person" introduces a doorway through which governmental authorities can reuse that well-intentioned guiding principle. "Security of person," what does that mean? You said something that made me feel insecure. Now government has the ability to regulate words, which is in violation of the First Amendment. I'm just giving an example, not saying this is how it would be. It's a very convenient example. When we enact government, when we enact more legislation, we always have to look at its worst application because we can be pretty certain that at some point, as the founders knew when they drew up our limited government, that any power given to government to step on and control people will be taken. We have nothing to do but look at the last two years and see the amount of governmental overreach to see the doorway that this opens up.
Article 4.
Make a point, and then this is...
Please do.
This is, thank you for coming and always expressing your opinion. But I just want to make sure you understand, this is not a law that we're adopting. It's not a law. It's not a law.
Then what is it? That will be addressed in the report.
Yeah, it will.
Okay, so what we can do is, if you'd like to go over that part of your report now, Deputy Mayor, because, you know, otherwise, if you go through every article, you would have far exceeded your three minutes. But, you know, but I get it. This is important to you, so that's why I don't have a problem with us going a little longer. So why don't we let her do that, unless you have anything else?
No.
Quickly.
I'd certainly like to hear it, and then I can be far more concise in my comments.
So, and we have talked about this at several meetings, and last meeting, again, I brought it up and brought it forward. We had Robert Keston here to discuss it.
I was working that night, unfortunately.
Well, you were here, actually, or you came to respond at one point. Actually, you were here when he...
Last year.
Yes, when he spoke about it, you know, and reminded us of things, like we had to make an amendment to the Constitution for slavery, et cetera, et cetera. But the Declaration of Human Rights, which has been adopted by many municipalities in Westchester County, so it's not only a, you know, something for a national government, and as it's been presented in that context at municipalities, it is also a document to allow us to begin a dialogue. And that's the intent of us adopting it. So it's to begin that dialogue, to provide a place for the community, to start to learn how to speak to each other. And, you know, even here in Tuckahoe, there are signs that we have lost that ability. So the adoption of this document is, and, you know, I always say hi to you too when I see you, Scooter Scott.
We agree, yeah. I always make sure when I see you.
Right. Right, so this is in that spirit, for us to have a guidance document that we agree upon, that it is a foundation and important for us to treat each other with respect. That's really the, in a nutshell, what this is for.
And its adoption would be, if it's not being adopted as a law, what, in what framework is this adoption being put forth?
So it's a guiding principle, if you will.
It's a guiding, this is, it's like Robert's Rules.
Yes, and, you know, we can, and I think we will pursue this, have people come in from the organization that Robert Keston works with and talk to us about what that means and what it means when you're in a community and making laws and doing a master plan, and how it relates to building community.
Does it have any authority at all?
It's not a law.
I understand that, but one can, just as Robert's Rules can constrain certain kinds of interaction, so can this.
It is a guidance, so I don't see how it can constrain us.
Okay, well, then I will hold my critiques to two things. The Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and Declaration basically put those guidances on the moral character of the individual. And those are generally honed and refined in the family and in the religious institutions. As, so I see it as basically unnecessary. In other words, as the mayor has often pointed out, when someone behaves badly, she has no problems pointing it out. And I think that's a good thing. Sometimes we may disagree on what behaving badly is, which means that the other person has the right to respond. And, but, anything that seeks to constrain the ability of, and I'm not saying this does, anything that seeks to constrain our lesser instincts should be the product of good upbringing. And I think it starts there. The second is that the overall framework of the document is, places the authority of these things at the feet of the United Nations, which I understand, it's not, we're not doing it as a law, but let's recognize that the authority in this document is completely out of the hands of any governmental authority located in this country. And it's placed at the United Nations, which, just as an American, I have a problem with. And we'll keep it at that for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda items? Agenda items?
I'm sorry, Adrian Michelle, 35, Washington Street. Was the Universal Declaration of Human Rights an agenda issue?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Scott?
Well, you have to, you address the board.
Oh, sorry. Well, this is in regards to Mr. Scott. As Robert Kirsten is a colleague of mine, I would be interested in seeing if maybe we can get him into possibly a community meeting. There may be a way that people who are not familiar with the Universal Declaration of Human Rights might want to learn a little bit about it. People who are familiar about it might want to hear an expert pretty much talk about how it could help a community such as Tuckahoe.
And thank you. That's exactly what will happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to address the board on any agenda items? Okay, so we will move to the first resolution, which is setting a public hearing on March 7 to consider the proposed local law to allow for beehives within the village of Tuckahoe. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Will you please call the roll? Camille?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. The second resolution, may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with Westchester County for a positive youth development program grant in the amount of $2,375?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And maybe we can have, the chief won't be here, you'll be presenting. Maybe you can speak a little bit about this when you do your report. Thank you. The third resolution, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Stammen Animal Hospital for the Care and Shelter of Dogs pursuant to provisions of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. And this resolution refers to a New York State law that requires each municipality to have a site or a pound to care for, shelter of dogs, or in agreement with a site to be able to provide those services. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the fourth... Did I do this right? Yeah. The fourth resolution is authorizing the village of Tuckahoe to adopt the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. May I have a motion?
Mayor, if I may, do you think perhaps we should let the gentleman come first so our village hears what exactly this declaration consists of? And then perhaps we can go ahead and adopt this?
Well, I would, I would like to point out that he has been here, he has explained it. You know, and that's on recording. We also posted the Declaration.
That was a year ago.
It was, but it hasn't changed, right? The explanation is still the same, and it has been posted on the website. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the idea is we adopt it as a community, and then, you know, Robert can come in and train us and talk to us about how to use it in our community.
So I will allow a vote. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Can you do a roll call? Camille?
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And may I have the motion for the next resolution authorizing the surplus of a 1999 Ford Model Special Service Diesel with ambulance box?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the final resolution is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $360,885.83.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, so we will move to departmental reports, and since we have Lieutenant Zerolnik, I'll have you go first. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The chief had nothing specific to report. I just wanted to take a moment to elaborate on the IMA that the Board approved, which is simply a collaboration with Westchester County, the Youth Bureau, and the Department of Children and Family Services. And what that is, as you mentioned, is an approval for approximately $2,400. It's an annual grant. It's a partnership we've been involved in for over 20 years, to my understanding. And it basically compensates local government or local municipalities like Tuckahoe that participate in youth programs. So we enroll in the system under our DARE program at the fifth and seventh grade levels. And not so much the perspective of the alcohol and drug abuse, but more so the children development side. How they, how they address challenges and things like that, their maturity and developing. So that's the angle that the, that the program is looking for. And we have approximately 200 students that are enrolled in that program between fifth and seventh grade. So we apply for the grant, and it's typically approved, and it's good ongoing collaboration with county government and the local.
That's great. How long have we been doing it?
The chief told me over 20 years, so I can't say for certain. It's been a while. The monetary value fluctuates a little bit, but we've been around the 2,400 mark in recent years. So it's a nice piece, and it's, again, it's a good partnership with county government and the local.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we voted on today, and it's a nice partnership. Other than that, I don't think the chief had anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, anyone from DPW? Is Frank on, David? No? So we'll have the library report? Good evening. Can you bring the mic down?
In celebration of Black History Month, we have two programs. We have online poetry reading by author David Mills, Saturday, February 26 at 2:00 p.m. and poet David Mills.
Bring the mic down a little, because, so that people can hear you at home, sorry.
Poet David Mills reads selections of poetry from his book, "Ponyam." "Ponyam" is a heart-wrenching collection of poetry about the African burial ground in New York City, the largest and oldest slave cemetery in North America. And we also have, on Friday, February 18, at 11:00 a.m., for ages 2 to 5-old, children, Anasie Asaf, and friends with Ria Alexander. And she's going to read stories, and there will be a lot of singing, dancing, and storytelling as we celebrate African heritage. And we have also, on Wednesday, February 9, at 7:00 p.m., the Cornelis Venderbal, the First Tycoon, and it's the lecture by Rick Finegold. And he discusses the life of Venderbal from steamships to railroad. And we also have, Wednesday, February 23, at 6:30 p.m., from the New York State Comptroller Office about unclaimed fund. Leah Solomon, a representative from the New York State Comptroller Office, will be providing a webinar on how to collect your unclaimed funds. We also have the Adult Book Club, and we are going to do, this is, we have a regular book club. This is our new, it's speculative shorts, online discussion group, Tuesday, February 15, at 7:00 p.m. And this is run by our librarian, Miriam Safra. And we are going to read two stories. The first one is "Dandelion Girl" and "Bridesickle Bible McIntosh." So if you are interested, please sign up online, and the copies of the stories are available. And we also have our regular event, Virtual Meditation, every Wednesday at 12:00 p.m. Gentle Chair Yoga, every Thursday at 5:30 p.m. And Online Tai Chi, we have Tuesdays, February 8 and 22. And Art Class on Wednesday, February 23, at 5:00 p.m. We are also having some children's program, Valentine Heart Take Home Craft. And we have Baby Time and Sing Along with Miss Elaine on Monday, February 14, at 11:30. Art Classes for children ages 7 to 10, February 9, at 4:30 p.m. And Yoga Classes on Thursday, February 10, for different age group, at children 2 and 1/2 to 5 at 11:00 a.m., and children 6 to 10 at 4:00 p.m. And we also have, for teens and teens, the Virtual Writing Club for Grade 4 to 8. And our local author explores writing with different kind of stories and different genre of stories. And the author is Eileen Moskovich. And we did this program around summer, during summer camp. And now we are doing, again, it is going to be on Tuesday, February 8, 15, and 22, at 4:00 p.m. And we are also participating in the program called Five Towns, One Book. It's a hybrid program, and the program, the book is "The Sum of Us" by Heather McKee. If anybody is interested, please go to our website, the copy of the books are available. And this program, it's a different library, Rye, Harrison, Mearneck, Largemont, and Tuckahoe is participating. And we also have, for teens, virtually "How to Successfully Navigate College Admission", which is going to be on Wednesday, or February 9, at 8:00 p.m. And another online Valentine Craft. Craft is Upcycle Magazine, and we are, this is also done by our librarian, Lisa. And this is a month of February, and everybody's thinking about their taxes. Since we don't have a space available this year, so AARP is available to help people at the Eastchester Public Library. People can call the Eastchester Library, and their number is 914-793-5055, to make a reservation, and they will do the taxes over there.
Thank you, thank you. Camille, do you have anything?
Renewals for our commuter merchant lots are due now. Please call Deputy Clerk Jackie Coretti at 914-231-0222 if you have not renewed yet. Coretti at nine-one-four-two-three-one-zero-two-two-two if you have not renewed yet.
Thank you, Jackie. David?
Couple of things. One, uh, last month, I did not get to kind of publicly say congratulations to Maureen Stevens on her retirement. If you recall, I was working my second job as a videographer. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to her, and, you know. Um, real quick, Netflix is gonna come back to the village probably next month, not Village Hall, unfortunately. We do like cashing that check, but, uh, they will be, uh, filming probably down in the Crestwood section of, um, of the village next week, so limited traffic interruptions, but we'll have something on the website and send something out in regards to that. And then, just real quick, I wanted to kind of let everyone know, it is now officially budget season within New York State and the village, um, crunching numbers already. And actually, interestingly enough, uh, the, the governor's budget proposals came out, and it was the first time, I think, in, in several years that municipalities, you know, trying to think of the best thing to say, weren't attacked necessarily, and I'll, I'll just come out and say it, um, it's, the, the new governor coming from local government has seemed to understand some of the concerns that are stemming from, you know, municipalities, and her budget, uh, kind of showed that in regards to, um, not increasing aim funding, but stopping the intercept of local sales tax, um, which means, I calculated eleven to fourteen thousand dollars per year for the village. It's real money when it kind of adds up. Um, increase in, um, CHIPS, or what they call it, Highway Improvement Programs, several different programs, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pave New York program, an extreme winter program, and all this kind of stuff, but all, all it means, it's real dollars for the village to actually go out there and pave roads, so it's really good. Um, and then just a lot of other money in regards to drinking water and downtown revitalization and other grants that are available out there. Um, but it does look like, um, this budget's a lot better for us in regards to, you know, from Albany, so just kind of looking forward to that. And again, our budget process has started soon, and I know just everyone should be kind of aware that we will have open meetings, um, in the next month, um, when budget will come out, March twentieth, so it'll be down the road a little bit, but, you know, if anyone has any questions or concerns in regards to the budget, or, you know, what's coming up next year, just definitely let us know.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I was happy to see that budget. Uh, Gary?
I just want to, again, congratulate Connie for the court clerk. I've been practicing over thirty years now, and I've been to countless courts, and our court is amazing. It really is, and you have to give credit, I see Judge Fuller still here. You have to give credit to our judges. It's their court, they run an incredible court. I've been all over, we have one of the best. So Judge Fuller and Jojo Tool, they really deserve a lot of credit.
Do you have anything else, Gary?
That's it.
Okay, so we will, uh, just to let everyone know, the next village board meeting is on March seventh at seven P M., so mark your calendars, and we'll move on to Board of Trustees reports, starting with trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I'd also like to congratulate Connie, um, you know, thank you for your hard work, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Um, also, I'd like to congratulate our Tucko High School cheerleaders. They'll be, uh, heading down to Florida soon, so we wish them luck. Um, I want to thank Donna Brown. Donna Brown is a resident here in Tuckahoe, and she's with the I-Cop, uh, the Y-Cop in Malvern, and, um, she, uh, gave me a call. She has, uh, had a bunch of, um, extra blankets and comforters, so she put together about thirty big, large bags, and, uh, we went around handing them out, so we want to thank Donna Brown for that. Thank you very much, Donna. Um, history committee. The history committee thanks the board for unanimous passage of the historic preservation legislation and the creation of the Historical Preservation Commission. Protecting historic sites within our village, we will continue to provide documentation and support for the landmarking of these historic treasures. The Old Stone Mill Complex Monument is also, is almost completed, awaiting the addition of benches in late spring. Special thanks to Frank DiMarco and the Tucko DPW team, Susan Shimara and the Tucko Beautification, and the Borough's Welcome Foundation for their expertise and generosity. If you missed Lisa Halen's fascinating virtual tour of the Eastchester Historical Map on January twenty-sixth at the Tuckahoe Public Library, a video link is on the library website. Maps may be purchased at the Tuckahoe Village Hall or Eastchester Town Hall for twenty-five dollars. Um, the Tuckahoe history folks, uh, reached out to eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-three people this January. The two posts, the two most popular posts were about the Hodgman Rubber and Leewood Beverage, uh, companies. Um, they want to say special thanks to Jackie for helping update their homepage. And that's the history. Um, beautification, I just want to remind the residents, it might be winter, but beautification is hard at work. As always, they need our help, so to those who are able, please, uh, make donations payable to TBA, P O Box one forty-two, Tuckahoe, New York. Okay. Next, I just want to recognize the passing of a wonderful man, Jim Britt. Jim Britt owned, uh, a local print shop here on Main Street where he made shirts for local sports teams. Um, like myself, many young kids in the neighborhood, the print shop was our first job. Jim always had a kind word and wanted to make sure, you know, everybody was doing good in school, and he'd stop you on the street and, you know, see how you were doing, and just kind of make sure you're doing the right thing. Um, so we, uh, we really appreciate what Jim brought to our community. He will be truly, uh, missed. And lastly, Mayor, um, I just want to, uh, so the residents of one-hundred Columbus are having, uh, issues with their heating. They handed out space heaters to the residents to help, but we all know how dangerous space heaters can be. So I was just hoping that we could address the, um, heating system over there as soon as possible. It's only gonna get colder, and, um, it's not right. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you. Um, so trustee Lang, just so you know, uh, Mayor Andino and I have been working, uh, ever since the new developers took over the property at one-hundred Columbus, including this weekend when there was, um, they have a temporary boiler setup as they try to replace and improve a lot of the infrastructure at that building. Um, we actually had Chris Pollan, the, the developer, fly in last week to talk with some residents over their concerns. Um, this weekend during the, um, the issue with the boiler and the heating, uh, they actually picked up, uh, a bunch of UL-rated safe heaters, uh, and gave them to residents as they were fixing the, um, the situation in the building. So I just, I don't know where you got that information, but they were safe, uh, UL-listed heaters, so every, there was no concern over that.
Um, there's nothing safe about temporary heaters, just so you know.
So, again, these are ones that have been used by the developer that are used in their buildings, and the situation was, uh, fixed, and the UL, uh, listed heaters were, were collected, and everything is back online.
Those were the same heaters that they handed out with, um, the NYSHA, New York City Apartments that had the fires.
Okay, so, uh, we'll, you know, I think that we need to, um, uh, double-check on that, um, but I, I just want people to know that we've been working on that for, you know, ever since the new developer took over. So for zoning and planning, uh, this month's zoning board is scheduled to meet at seven-thirty on February ninth, and, uh, with a working meeting an hour prior to that. There's only one agenda item, um, that has not been adjourned, and that's for a variance on twenty-two Wallace to install pavers and, uh, a fence. The next planning board meeting is February sixteenth, uh, and contains three items. One is a site plan to construct a retaining wall at a hundred and seventy Marble Dale, which is an auto, um, body repair shop. Uh, uh, second is the renovation of the soccer field at two hundred White Plains Road, which has been discussed before at the planning board. And then, uh, the final return is for the site plan at two-twenty-five White Plains Road. This was one of the properties that was sold as part of the, um, the three, uh, pieces of property that were sold when Iona bought Concordia. Um, and unlike the, um, uh, the house that has historical, um, significance, which is the Ward House, uh, the property at two-twenty-five White Plains Road has not been one where anyone, including our Historical Preservation Task Force, could establish criteria for historical significance. So while there's a lot of really cool, interesting lore, um, about that area and Dutch Schultz, um, it is, it is very different than what had to be done with the Ward House, where, uh, the, the committee had to show things like, uh, in historical documents, including Alexander Hamilton's writing, uh, the Ward House was actually referred to. So, you know, if you look at the new, um, law that was voted on, uh, last meeting, um, it's, it's very significant what you have to do to, to demonstrate that something has, um, historical significance. So I just want to make sure that people understand, you know, a lot of people have looked into that property at two-twenty-five White Plains Road, and there, there's nothing that we can, you know, um, show that would, would establish that as having historic significance. Uh, another thing, uh, looking at the property, just so, so we understand, uh, the evaluation of it for what the developer has brought forward, is, you know, it's two parcels within ten thousand square feet, Gary?
It's over twenty thousand.
Over twenty thousand.
Parcels, so if they split it up, it'll be ten thousand.
Okay, each, each parcel. Um, and according to our law, as it stands now, that developer can split those parcels, uh, which he has asked to do in an, uh, an even manner. Um, and that's all within the law as it is stated right now. So, um, he has proposed to build two houses on the property. I've gotten some correspondence that people suggested that they were gonna try to build three houses on it. That's not true. He's put a proposal for two houses, each on the ten thousand square fe- feet of that lot, right? Um, and again, this is all within, you know, the law as it stands right now. And even though he could build very large, five-thousand-square-foot houses there, he has proposed three-thousand-square-foot houses, so they're substantially smaller than he could go with, and, you know, I think this will go a long way to preserve the green space that's, that's there. So I just wanted people to understand that this developer has asked for nothing, no variance, nothing, um, you know, uh, and everything that has been proposed has been within the law that's on the books right now. Um, the house that's there is, is in great disrepair, and I don't believe it would be possible for anybody to afford, you know, um, bringing that back to life, uh, you know, up to a standard. It was used for many, many, many years as a dormitory, and it's not in good shape. Um, the other thing that will happen if there are two houses built there is, right now, the entrance and exit from the property is on White Plains Road. That will be moved to the side streets if the lot is split and there are two houses built, so that would improve, uh, traffic. So, um, you know, finally, I just wanted to comment on people's concerns about green space, and this lot is a really unique lot in Tuckahoe. There's none other that we could think of offhand that was, you know, so large. But, um, this is why things like the master plan are so important, because if you really want to preserve certain parts of a neighborhood and the look of your neighborhood, the master plan is where you do that. And, and, you know, that's where in committee you decide what you want your village to look like, and you start to lay down the laws that are necessary to make that happen. So you have to have the laws ahead of that, um, to be able to stand on it. So as we, um, you know, start to ask for people to volunteer for that master plan committee, that's one way. The, through the process, there'll be times when the committee asks for village input, and I hope people really come and participate in that, because that's where, you know, you have the most ability to affect the way the community looks. Um, Eastchester Schools have a very important vote this month, on February fifteenth, for, uh, a bond that will cover sixty-eight million dollars for improvements of infrastructure across all of the school buildings. I've posted on my, uh, Facebook site, uh, a great instructional video that the school district has put out explaining what the bond, uh, you know, why it's necessary and what it will pay for. It also covers a large part of security, um, you know, creating vestibules in each of the schools, uh, to address that. And there's an additional seven-million-dollar option, um, to put air conditioning into all of the schools. So I hope folks will take advantage of all of the information the school, the school district has put forward on that and participate in the vote. There's been an emergency meeting called by the Board of Education on Wednesday at six P M., um, to address COVID protocols, which I'm sure if anybody's watching the news have been, you know, are evolving, um, as those cases drop precipitously. Uh, I wanted to thank the, um, uh, task committee for, um, you know, putting forward the, uh, law on beekeeping, and I just wanted to point out that one thing I think is really important in that, and I've had the, um, opportunity to work with the group on that, is we are going to require, um, when you put a hive on your property, that you put a structure near the hive that forces the bee flight path to go up rather than out on the property. So again, you know, we're trying to make sure as we, as that law was written, that, uh, we keep the bees away from the humans and the pets. So I think that will, that's an important part of that, that law. Uh, we had a, a great blood drive this weekend. Uh, our neighbor Rita Mastro Bernardino, um, has been running this for, for many years, um, uh, as part of the, uh, Forever Rallying for Regina Blood Drive, and she, uh, gave a letter to me that she would like for me to read to you tonight. "I'm writing to thank the Village of Tuckahoe for helping in the success of the Tenth Annual Forever Rallying for Regina Blood Drive. We appreciate the collective efforts of our community and the success of this event. Special thanks to Mayor Andino and the village board, John Galuzzi and his team at the Tuckahoe Community Center, John Costanza and the Tuckahoe Police Department, and our wonderful Tuckahoe community. We collected seventy-five units of blood and a steady stream of donors throughout the day. Although the Forever Rallying for Regina Relay for Life Team missed hosting the event in person again this year, our team's virtual raffle raised well over three thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society, and we thank our donors and participants. We hope the community will join us in a continued effort to raise money to support the important work of the American Cancer Society, and we're happy to announce that Stick a Fork in Cancer, sponsored by local restaurants, um, will take place starting on February fourteenth and carry through till March thirteenth." So several local restaurants tucked away, um, The Prince, Toscana, and The Mason Sandwich Company, um, will be offering, uh, or will be supporting, they, uh, they'll contribute ten percent of the proceeds of that evening will go to the American Cancer Society. So each of the restaurants has designated days when they'll do this. I put that schedule on my Facebook page, too, and we could, could we put that on the village page? Yeah, so we'll put it on the village page, and everybody go out to dinner. Um, so Rita continues to say, "Most importantly, we thank the many donors who contributed, contributed the gift of life. As we are reminded, blood donations are a vital and essential aspect of modern life. With Tuckahoe's support, we already have planned our next blood drive for Saturday, February fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Please mark your calendars. Sincerely, Rita." So thank you for the community for being so giving. Um, so I, I wanted to congratulate and thank the Juneteenth Committee again. Uh, thank you for sponsoring so many great, um, events for the Black History Month. Um, I'm, uh, looking forward to attending them. And, uh, congratulations to Connie, uh, for stepping in and taking that position, and congratulations to Maureen on her retirement. And, uh, I hope everybody has a happy Valentine's Day. We're gonna hear about an exciting program from trustee Cronin, and, uh, I want everybody to, uh, make sure they get out and send a valentine to somebody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Eastchester Community Action Program, uh, on January seventeenth, um, it was Martin Luther King Day, and to honor Dr. Dr. Martin Luther King, the children from the ECAP's Books and Beyond After-School Program, um, they got together and did a awesome video presentation. Um, the ECAP Area Director Denise Chen and the entire ECAP Advisory Board would like to thank all of our donors and local residents and businesses for their generosity in lieu of the annual MLK breakfast fundraiser that we haven't been able to have due to COVID. So, uh, many people were generous, and we were able to raise the funds that ECAP normally has when they have their breakfast, actually even a little bit more. So Denise thanks you, and the advisory boards thanks you. On Wednesdays from ten A M. to two P M., there are four nurses at ECAP from Mer-, from the Mercy College School of Nursing, and this is for anyone in need. Um, they can go to the ECAP during that time, and there will be four nurses in training that can assist you with anything you need. Um, the seniors group that had, they had paused it due to COVID, but it will resume tomorrow. Um, that's every Tuesday, and it will start again back tomorrow. They also have theater classes there, um, with Sarah Lawrence College at ECAP on Thursdays. Um, that's a new program that's just starting. And then the Westchester Arts Council is doing a tile project with both the after-school kids and the seniors, but that will be starting on March tenth. The Family Services of Westchester is working with after-school children, um, also weekly. The Family Services of Westchester is working with after-school children also weekly. And then Denise, the director, wanted to let the village know that, and the residents know that, due to an increase in needs of our residents, and these are those who participate in the monthly food pantry, she is, she's working on trying to secure a second food pantry day for the middle of the month. And she said it's not necessarily that we have a lot more people, it's that the people who have been coming have informed her that they need more help in that manner, and she's trying to secure that going forward. The Tuckahoe Community Center, as trust, as, excuse me, on Saturday, February 5th, and love and memory of Regina Fay, to help patients in need of blood, the Forever Blood Drive Rally was held there. Congratulations to Rita Mastrow-Bernardino and the Community Center Director John Galuzzi on another successful blood drive in honor of Regina Fay. They were able to collect 75 life-saving donations. That's 225 lives that the blood drive will be helping in hospitals and throughout our As many of you are aware, this is, February is Black History Month, and as the Juneteenth Committee spoke earlier, they are having three events in February, and I know that Adrian mentioned them earlier, but I will mention them again. Friday, February 11th at 7:00 PM will be their movie night, and it's a documentary called Hidden Colors. Saturday, February 19th at 5:00 PM will be a genealogy workshop with presenter Joyce Cole. These are, entries are free. There is suggested donations, but there is not a fee, not a price for that. And then Saturday on February 26th, they will have music, a cook-off, and refreshments, and they also have a suggested donation for that night, and it's $10.
Here's more?
Yep, 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 yep. Yep. Okay. Where's my housing report? And in lieu of Black History Month, I would just like to mention some of the African-American residents from the village over the years who have served in one capacity or another for the village. Let me start out by saying, I obviously would not have everyone who has served. So I did some research, talked to some people, and got some information, but if I don't mention somebody, I'm sure Adrian will assist us in her programs. On that Saturday, the 26th, we, anybody who has anybody else, you can bring it, and we can do it there. So first, Tuckahoe Village trustees, Reverend Walter Yates, I believe might have been the first African-American person to serve on this board. Also Bill Fisher, Margaret Coleman, and Joseph Yancy. On a Tuckahoe Police Department, the first African-American chief was Henry Norman, and the first African-American police lieutenant was Joseph Yancy. On a Tuckahoe School Board, Robert Morris served, Jim Murray served, Reverend Frank Coleman, and Laurie Gerald is serving presently. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority, the first African-American Tuckahoe Housing Authority Director was Harry A. Dawkins III. Those that served on the board was Reverend Houston, Bernice Yancy, and that's it for the board. I mentioned the Community Center earlier. Anybody who's been a longtime resident of Tuckahoe would remember Ms. Pauline Jones. She had, she did the job that John Galuzzi's doing now for many years, and she was an awesome lady who touched so many of our youth over the years. She has passed, but she was a special lady. And then lastly, the Eastchester Community Action Program, her husband Willie Jones is, these are the directors, Lovely Billups, my mother Amelie Taylor, Odine Mangum, Dolores Garrett, Vivian Yancy, Geraldine Gunther, Charlene Lambrecht, Laurie Gerald, Don Brown, and presently Denise Chen. Thank you.
Now we're done?
Yep.
Okay. Trustee Cronin.
Hi, everybody. I hope everyone is well. I will skip the tree, tree request. Just reminder, if you do want a tree at your home, you can go to the TSC website, tsc.tuckahoe.org. From the Tuckahoe seniors, they are open once again, and in-person programs have resumed. They are having a pizza lunch next Tuesday, the 15th, at 12:00 PM, co-hosted by the Senior Citizens Council. On Thursday, the 17th, at 1:00, there's a virtual concert from Tuckahoe High School. And then on the 24th, former Mayor Greg Louisi will be hosting Bingo. From the Tuckahoe schools, I'd also like to congratulate the Tuckahoe cheerleaders, who I think just have won their third first-place win. They seem to be doing very well this year. So congratulations. Like I said before, that is an incredibly difficult sport, so kudos to all of you. Also, kudos to the Habitat for Humanity Club at Tuckahoe High School. The students and their advisor are currently working with the Fuller Center for Housing to restore the lower level of one of the Tuckahoe homes of a World War II veteran whose home was flooded during Hurricane Ida. So congratulations and kudos to them, too. Kindergarten registration is happening for children who turn five by December 1st, 2022. Forms and the required documents can be found on the district website under Parent Resources. If you need a form mailed to you, you can contact Karen Barrows. And the PTA is holding Valentine's Day Bingo Night on February 10th at 7:00 and 7:45, depending on the grade. I'd like to also, before I forget, to congratulate Constance Kitateki for her promotion to court clerk. It is well-deserved. And so now I'd like to talk a little bit about a new program called Show Tuckahoe Some Love. I'm excited to be working with Shannon McDonough and the Friends of the Tuckahoe Library for this project. With the generous support from the Tuckahoe Framing Gallery and help from, a help from a few local businesses, we will be installing Valentine-making stations around the village for most of February. So right now, we could all use a little love, and everyone deserves a little lift and a friendly reminder that what they do is appreciated. So we're asking people to make Valentines for your favorite police officer, service person, merchant, village administrator, and bring it to them, right? So the idea is that you'll take a picture of your Valentine, or more ideally, take a picture of yourself giving your Valentine to your special person, and then hashtag, hashtag #TuckahoeLove22, and you can post it on your personal page, and we'll go looking for those hashtags, and we will hopefully be able to display those. So the, right now, there are stations, well, this week, there'll be stations placed at Remax Real Estate on Columbus Avenue, the Dance Gallery at 25 Main, the Broken Bro Brewery at Marbledale Road, and the Community Center and Library, of course. Any other businesses in the village who are interested in participating, you are welcome and able, please reach out to Shannon and the Friends of the Library. You can find more information about this project, anyone can find more information about this project, at tuckahofriends.org. A word earlier about our Juneteenth presentation, I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to these two young ladies. It is very hard to come up here, and I understand that, and you did a wonderful job. I just want to say that I'm really happy to see young people taking the initiative and wanting to preserve our history. Our collective history should be taken seriously, and it's very important to preserve what once was, especially the stories that may not make it to the history books. So thank you for doing that. In the spirit of Black History Month and all the work that you've been doing, I would like to take a second to acknowledge three people that really go above and beyond for the village. Now, there are so many people who do all kinds of volunteering here, and so I don't want anyone to feel like I'm leaving them out either, but I will not make a list as long as Trustee Taylor's, I promise. So these three women take basically every chance that they get to serve their community. They serve on committees, they start committees, they help preserve our history, they help our elders, they help work with our children, and they answer the call every single time we ask, when it's vaccine clinics, or testing clinics, or distribution of any kind of supplies, they are always there to help. So I would just like to take a moment to thank Cassie Savage, Adrian Michelle, and Noreen Yancy for all that you do, and I hope that one day, children like these tell your stories up here at the podium. Finally, I would just like to thank Mr. Scott, still here, thank you for staying, too, for your comment about the Universal Declaration for Human Rights. I share your concern, whether you realize it or not, about the limitations of free speech, and I think that was something that you were getting at with your concern. And I think we're very quick in our society to go to dangerous places in terms of limitations of speech. And as you mentioned, we have this incredible document that we know of as the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, which protect us, but also supersedes any other declaration or local law or any other kind of philosophical mandating that people get themselves into. So we know that the, that our free speech and anything that you are worried about there is protected by the, by the U.S. Constitution. What I, the reason why I voted yes, and what I like about this, is that it does actually point out something that we are very quick to, to kind of step on, and it's philosophical and political differences. And so I appreciate that you came here and that you expressed that concern. It's something that I am also very concerned with. And what I, what I took from this Universal Declaration of Independent, of Human Rights is, in Article II, it's protection of people's thoughts and beliefs, and that is something that we should all stand behind. We could all use a reminder about each other's humanity and show each other a little love and care. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. I also want to start by saying how proud I am of you two young ladies, that you came here. Public speaking is difficult for most of, well, many of us, I won't say most of us, but it is for me, and I have to do this often. So you guys did a beautiful job, giving, I just want to give you another hand. And I want to encourage you to continue to search our history, not just black history, but all of our history, and continue to come and bring those pearls of wisdom and knowledge to us. So thank you very much. And thanks to the parents who, and the committee for supporting these young ladies. And in keeping in the spirit of our youth, I received a Youth Community Fund Town Liaison's Report, and I was pretty impressed with this report. The Youth Community Fund is doing, they're doing so many wonderful things, and I won't read this entire report, but just a few things that they've done in the past few months. They've worked with ECAP in the summer camp, they're tutoring the students at ECAP, they've worked with Bundles of Joy, who provide and organize, providing baby supplies and products for young women. They helped with an Amazon Drive for back-to-school, and a distribution day in Tuckahoe, they've worked with the Tuckahoe Cares Day Cleanup. There are so many different activities that they have, they've participated in and organized these young people. And so I want to give them a shout-out. This report came by Elizabeth Denning. She is the Community Service Co-Chair and the Tuckahoe Town Liaison, and you can reach them if you have any questions or you have a new opportunity for them to serve. You can email them at ycf.bet@gmail.com. So kudos to the Youth Community Fund for all the great work that they are doing. We have some youth that are doing some wonderful things in our community. I also had a meeting with our village administrator and the Beautification Committee. We met to discuss some concerns that they have around fundraising and also some, a need for volunteers. So I am on their behalf, asking that anyone in the community who loves the work that the Beautification Committee is doing, you know, the flowers that you see, the hanging baskets, the benches that we have, they're doing a lot of great work, they're facilitating the, the work being done that's going to be done later in this year at our Depot Square. So they're doing a lot of wonderful work, but they need some assistance. So if you're interested in volunteering to serve on that committee or just to help them out, they're looking specifically for assistance with setting up social media, setting up their ability to make donations online right now, the checks that have to be written, some people who don't even have checkbooks feel a little constrained by that requirement. So if you are interested, please, you can contact me, or if you go on our website, you can find information on how to contact the Beautification Committee directly. So thank you to the Beautification Committee for all that they do all year long. Also, wanted to give you guys an update on our vaccine clinic and distribution of test kits. On January 22nd, we held the Vaccine Clinic at the Assumption Church in partnership with Pervesh Patel and the Narayan Pharmacy, and I want to thank the church for allowing us to use their space, Father Fata Hall, as well as the pharmacy and their team. A lot of young people there also volunteering in the clinic. I think we vaccinated about 60 people, 55 to 60 people, so I want to thank them for that. Also, on January 24th, we, we want to, I want to thank Congressman Bowman's Office for organizing a visit, along with the Westchester County DPW, our DPW, our village administrator, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the DEC regarding flood mitigation in Tuckahoe. There was some work started some years back, but I think that maybe there is some funding now that might be able to help us alleviate some of the challenges that many of the residents here have experienced around flooding. So that was the first step. Now we're going to get some, a report from them that says what's possible, and then we're going to be pressing our legislators to help fund any mitigation that we need here in Tuckahoe. We also, I also want to thank our legislators and partners in government for helping us during these difficult times. We've been in the middle of COVID for two years now, and they've, you know, they've, we've called, we've, you know, harassed, and they've responded. So I want to thank them. I want to thank Congressman Bowman, County Executive George Latimer and his team, Senator Shelley Mayer, Assemblywoman Pollan, and thanks to County Legislature Mara as well. They've helped us with vaccine clinics, providing tests, masks, hand sanitizers. I also want to thank Bob Foster and the veterans, as well as Josh, for donating bags that we used at the last distribution. They bought, I think, 200 bags. We wanted to give people bags that would make the line move quicker, and they just donated 200 bags that we could make little kits for people to have their test kit and their masks and their hand sanitizers, and it made, you know, things go much more smoothly. So I want to thank the veterans who've already given so much, they continue to give. So thank you. Also, last, this weekend, Trustee Cronin and I were invited to the Concordia Conservatory Gala, where we attended the silver anniversary of Kathleen Suss, the executive director. She's been there for 25 years, and I really, it was such an amazing event. The conservatory had music of all different genres, and there was, in recognition of Black History Month, they had Norm Lewis, who was the first black man to perform the lead role in The Phantom of the Opera on Broadway, who performed at the gala, and his performance was nothing short of phenomenal. So it was such a treat to be there, and I just want to thank, and thank the conservatory, and congratulate Kathleen for 25 years of giving access to music to people of all ages, income levels, and musical abilities. They're really a gem right here in the village and in the, in the town. I also want to remind everyone, I think I'd mentioned this in December, or maybe even January, that Tuckahoe will be celebrating, speaking of Tuckahoe history, 120 years this year. speaking of Tuckahoe history, 120 years this year. So I am looking for ideas of different events that people might be interested in helping to organize, to celebrate 120 years here in Tuckahoe. That's a huge event, and I look forward to celebrating with you guys and learning more about Tuckahoe's history because I came and visited with the History Committee and learned, you know, a few pearls. Every time I speak to them and others who've been here, lifelong residents, and so I'm really enjoying learning and growing in my role here as mayor and learning more about Tuckahoe. I'd like to address a post that was made on Facebook regarding our distribution of test kits. And I think that this speaks to some of what we've been sort of alluding to regarding the declaration and showing people a little love and just coming together a little bit more. And I want to start with a quote from Teddy Roosevelt. Teddy Roosevelt said, "It is not the critic who counts, not the one who points out how another stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the one who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood." I've spent a good portion of my adult life serving whatever community I've lived in. When COVID hit and we found ourselves in the middle of a 100-year pandemic, I jumped into crisis mode, as I usually do, and I wanted to see what we in Tuckahoe could do to ensure we took care of the people here in Tuckahoe. We've held vaccine clinics, we've distributed masks, and we've had hand sanitizers to more than 1,200 people. Some residents reached out and offered to assist us in that effort, and I'm really grateful that we have so many loving people here who volunteer their time and their talents. We had nurses and doctors come to the vaccine clinics and say, "How can we help to administer the vaccines?" I find sometimes that we can get, you know, petty. And it's sad that a sitting Eastchester Councilmember, Sheila Marquette, who's also a former Tuckahoe Village trustee, former county legislator, and a longtime Tuckahoe resident, took to social media to criticize and undermine our efforts in distributing these test kits. After we held the Test Kit Distribution Day on January 15th, rather than come and offer assistance or even suggestions if she felt that there was something we could do better, Councilwoman Marquette took to social media, and this is what she wrote. I'm quoting, "This morning, dressed warm, last time they did this, they made people stand in line, sign for it," referring to the test kits, "and give an email address. You got a COVID test and their business card." And there were several hashtags, making it political, creating an email list, and shameful. She later wrote an update to the post, and that read, quoting, "Update: Thankfully, they took Trustee Lang's advice and didn't make you sign your name and give your email address." So I'd like to address a few things in this post because in the past, I've had to address things that were said that were untrue, that were erroneous, and I want to make sure that at least the facts are out, and then you can decide for yourself. So Councilwoman Marquette stated that people were made to give their email address, and in the hashtag stated that we're creating an email list, as if to imply that we're creating this email list for political purposes and for political gain for the, I'm a Democrat, so that the Democratic Committee could use these emails, addresses. So I want to respond to that to say that the reason we ask for people's email addresses, for one, is because we want to give people more access and more information. We have a mere 300 people on our email list in the village, and we're trying to grow that. So when we collect the email addresses that people can give or not, some chose not to, it goes to our deputy clerk, who then uses that information. So when we have these events and these distribution days that people complain they don't know about, we're struggling with getting that information out short of running flyers and then putting them throughout the village when sometimes we don't have that much information, that notice. So that, I wanted to make sure that people understand the email list, the emails that we are collecting are so that we can give to our deputy clerk so that she can add to the village email list so that when we have information that goes out, more people will have access to it, and you're able to opt out if you get an email and you don't want them. The other thing that was stated was, "You got a COVID test and their business card." The village is not my business. The village is where I serve. I work for another organization, a not-for-profit. That would be my business card. When I give someone my card or anyone on this board, gives you a card or gives anyone a card, it's that you have access to your government, so that you have access and you can call people with concerns, questions. And in fact, for this event, we were, I wasn't there at the first time. They were giving the cards in case people had questions about how to use the kit. Many people did, were not feeling comfortable using the kit for themselves. The hashtag "making it political," we've held since COVID hit in 2020, March of 2020, we've held more than 15 vaccine clinics. We've distributed masks, we've distributed hand sanitizers. To say that it's making it political, sounds to me like maybe you're making it political because we've been doing this. And anyone who does it, I commend because anyone who does this is doing good for our community, so we should be happy that anyone chooses to do it. The hashtag shameful, I think what's really shameful is that when we're working against the efforts that are going to help the residents, that to me is shameful. When we exert so much energy on social media instead of joining efforts, and if you think that there's something we can do better, then say that. Say, "Maybe this is the better way to do it." And I know that you're here to do that, so I appreciate that you're waiting to speak. So it's sad to me that we can't come together, even in a 100-year pandemic, that's impacting both Republicans, Democrats, independents, Black and white people, rich and poor people. This is not a political issue. It was nearly zero degrees on the second day that we did not ask for people's email addresses because it was so cold and we're trying to move people along. It wasn't because anyone needed to advise us to use our common sense. So when we're dealing with these events, your, things are in influx. And based on the circumstances in front of you, you make some decisions. The decisions at some point, some might agree with or not. I'm very open to anyone coming to the mic, which we've had people come to the mic and say, "You know what? Maybe this could have been done differently." So I'm, it's, it just, it makes me sad to know that there may have been people who wanted a test, but because they look up to the councilperson or they respect the councilperson's word, may have been deterred from getting something that they may have needed. We can't be so consumed by hate that we wouldn't accept a cold drink of water from somebody in the middle of the desert. And if you accept it, complain that it's too cold, the glass of water. I'm asking that we begin to come together to help our community, the community that we all say we love so much. There's just way too much division around issues that we shouldn't be divided on, that we should all be on the same page about. And I think that it's important that we start to do that. So I'm publicly and openly inviting, we're going to have another clinic or a distribution day, we post them. I'm inviting everyone, everyone on the Eastchester Town Board, everyone on the Bronxville Village Board, any residents here that want to participate. We all need this, and we all need each other. So I want us to start thinking along those lines and working along those lines. Politics is a different issue. If we want to, you know, debate issues, then we have a public forum, and we find a way to have that discourse respectfully. And that's, that's all I'll say about that. Happy Black History Month. Thank you again to the Juneteenth Committee, and I wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Find somebody to show some love to. Maybe you find someone to show some love to that you typically wouldn't. Maybe this is an opportunity for us to be able to extend that olive branch. So on that note, there's a second opportunity to address the board, and I will have the young lady in the back begin.
Hello. This is my first time speaking, and I'm ashamed, I'll be honest with you, that I've kept my mouth shut all these months, thinking, or all these years, I'm going to be honest. I was busy with my family, busy business, and now I come. And the last month's meeting brought me to tears, to see the disrespect, to see how people are treating and talking. And I'm going to say to you, this was not my intention. I had something else that I wanted to say, but it starts here. It starts here. It doesn't, you can't sit there and demand people to give a glass of water, and I'm just using that as an analogy. It's how we were raised, my interpretation of Tuckahoe. I've been here a long time. I've never, ever, ever seen, you know, anything that warranted this kind of reaction. I haven't. I know all the areas, I know many people, and, but I'm a quiet little person. But here's what I want to say. This is the year of the tiger, it's Chinese New Year. Tuckahoe's mascot is a tiger. The people want to wake up. And the people who are afraid to speak because they're made to come up and give their name and their address, and I know many of them, they're older or they're handicapped or they don't get out, but they're as outraged as I am. And what we saw, how the articulation of last month and how it ended, I actually wanted to ask you, did indeed the fire person, whoever they nominated, did that person get the job? It seems to be a cliffhanger. There was a distinct, and I don't know who it was towards, I'm going to be very honest with you, but the message that you heard on YouTube, which was, it airs you, which I don't think people at home know this. YouTube, you know, you can watch it, and I've spread it around to other people. It left such a bad taste in my mouth that it literally sounded like, you know, a threat that if this person doesn't get the job, you know, you're to blame. And to me, that's not how we should be, it starts here. There should be the three-minute rule or the six-minute rule. I don't think people should be made to come up here. And just so you know, I did my research. If you look at the Governor's New York State law regarding this, it says you are not required. You have to check in, and that's what I've done. So you will be seeing more of me and hearing from more of me. Sorry for the shaking.
No, no, no. I'm not a good speaker. We understand that.
Young ladies, really, you did so much better. And you're great little speakers, this is not easy. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
We need to, and this is the year of the tiger. You're going to hear Tuckahoe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Let me just see if there's anyone else that would like to speak. Trustee Lang, and then you feel free. Okay.
Hello, Mike Dardano, Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. What we saw tonight, I think, was interesting. I've been going to these meetings since 2016, under different circumstances. I was going to talk about something else, but now I think it's sort of a segue into what I was going to lead into. This is the first time, I think, since I've watched the boards, that we actually had a semi-debate here, which I thought was interesting. And what I mean by that is, we have an election coming up, and we never have, we haven't had debate in many, many years. But like tonight, we actually had some debate. I actually agree with Scooter, by the way. I actually agree with you. I didn't vote for Scooter, but I do agree with him. And just because I didn't vote for him doesn't mean he's not a decent man. And I think that's what I want to get across tonight. No, absolutely, absolutely. And, and here's my thing. I want to see leadership, I want to see leadership from our parties, not notes and ridiculous cobble pizza child stuff going on at Vellagio's. That's ridiculous, we're beyond that. I don't know who did it, I don't care who did it. It's got to stop. I would like to see both parties make a joint statement saying this is BS. I won't swear because I'm trying, it's a family hour here. And I'd also like to see real issues discussed. Oftentimes, there's these peripheral issues, some things that I've seen that just, it's just not a real issue. So here's a few real issues for you. Trash, clean up the trash. It's been, I've been living here for years, and the trash has gotten worse. There's an issue. On the Southern Brown Field, well, the Southern P site, which is where the hotel is, they're drilling. They're drilling, they're testing. We need to know why. I already talked to the DEC and know why, but we, we need to find that out. Businesses, when candidates say they want to help businesses, I don't know what that means. There's never any specifics. Get specifics when you talk about taxes. Be specific. Let's get more Netflix, whatever, but so we can get money in. Be specific. Tell us as individuals, I'm an independent, so I sometimes am not decided. Tell us what's going on, tell us what your ideas are specifically, not just generalities. Respect the public, treat each other with respect. And none of this like mean-girl stuff. Oh, you know, like the outrage committee that's waiting to type stuff on Facebook. If you have an accusation or think, bring it up. Like tonight, this was good. I like this. I like this little debate about the heaters. I said, "Wow, if we can do this here, then you can do it in a public forum." So please, I ask you, show some leadership, let the voters know. Some of us have decided, some of us hadn't. Just tell us like what's up, really what's up, not peripheral crap. We don't need that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Chris DiGiorgio.
Did you say something?
I would like to say something.
No, after Dan.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Christy Giorgio, 50 Columbus Avenue. And I just want to address something that a previous speaker spoke about with regard to name and address. I firmly believe people should be giving their names and addresses. The reason being is, these folks represent the people of Tuckahoe, and they have to know where you live. And if there's a specific problem or a specific issue, they can at least understand where the neighborhood is with regard to that. So, you know, anytime I have visited assembly people, state senators, you sign your name, you put your address, you do that. It's just common constituent services with regard to that. I want to thank Trustee Howell about mentioning about the master plan. I'm a big proponent that we need every 10 years to have a master plan. And I said in the previous board that there should be an ordinance. And the ordinance should be, on the ninth year of the decade, a resolution from this board needs to be stated about creating a master plan committee. And on the zero year, so 2030, there should be a master plan committee automatically put into place. Now, in that resolution on the nine year, you can forego it. You could say, "We don't need a master plan committee." But at least on the ninth year of every decade, you should at least have a mechanism where you're saying, "We're doing a master plan for the next decade," or "We're not doing a master plan for the next decade." But I think that's an important thing that we can professionalize our planning. I also want to say, I forgot who it was, maybe it was you, Mayor Andino, about things that we've done in the past that I'd like to see brought back on at least the 120th. We used to have a Tuckahoe Day. It was every September, like, I think it was, maybe Danny, you remember, it was like a week after Labor Day, something like that. It was in September. It's a beautiful type of thing where we have tables and we celebrate Tuckahoe. And since it's 120 years, this may be a good time to resurrect Tuckahoe Day. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, for all your efforts with COVID. You know, getting vaccines, getting testing. You know, I know back in July, I got tested at the Shiloh Church, and Trustee Cronin was helpful there, even before she was a trustee. It's very important, all hands should be on deck with regard to this scourge of COVID. Hopefully, we're seeing the, close to the end of this, but we have to keep our Ps and Qs together on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. No, hold on. I just, if there's anyone else that has not yet spoken? Okay.
I was so nervous, I don't think I articulated it, and I thank you so for bringing that. So what the procedures in the Governor's memo is that we go in to the secretary, and for issues that pertain to Tuckahoe itself, that we show proof of residency, our driver's license or whatever, it doesn't have to be copied, but the person taking it. And that's what I'm referring, I don't mean for, but, you know, I think that's very important. And the other thing, if I may, to the police officers who picked up the phone at four o'clock the other morning, when there was those big loud bangs, and I honestly thought it was the end of the world on Lake Avenue, I thanked them for keeping me calm, and it happened to be some kind of a thing that blew up. So, but I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have researched that issue.
Yes.
I haven't researched that issue with, about the name and everything, but if, if the speaker can just, after the meeting, just give me the memo that she's referring to by the governor, I'll take a look at it and then I'll be able to revise the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
So trustee Lang, you wanted to say something, sorry.
Yeah, in regards to what Maureen had just said. Do we think that perhaps we might need to get proof of residents? Let me tell you why I bring this up. A bunch of years ago, when we had Mayor John Fitzpatrick here, I was home watching, and I, and I noticed three people get up, and they claimed that they lived in our neighborhood. I happen to be a foreman in Local Three, and these three gentlemen worked for me, and they all lived in the Bronx. One lived in Valhalla, up in northern Westchester, and they got up here and they said that we live at 52 Fairview, if I remember correctly, and I was outraged, I couldn't believe it, because I know personally where these folks live. So I honestly think that perhaps we need to look into providing, just what Maureen did today, provide her identification with where she lives and her address, just for the future, just throwing it out there.
Okay. Trustee Cronin, you said you wanted to?
Yeah, I just, you know, I wanted to thank Mr. Dardano for his comment. I do believe that there needs to be public discourse about issues that affect the village. We haven't really had that opportunity. This is not the forum to discuss politics, and so it's not the place for that to happen, which is why I, I do know that the Democratic Committee Chair has reached out to the Republican Committee Chair, and has asked for a friendly public forum to discuss the issues at hand for the village in the upcoming election, and I hope that maybe trustee Lang can help facilitate making that happen, so that people can really know and understand what it is that, you know, we're trying to accomplish here.
Did I see one, one hand up?
I'm sorry, our student, our scholar, she wanted to come up, she came in a little late, and there was one more person she wanted to present, if we can, and I think it's a great way to close off the meeting.
Okay.
On a positive note, I hope everyone have a wonderful evening, and I thank you for your time, and I hope to see you during Black History Month at the P L Center.
Okay.
We also wanted to take this opportunity to reflect on a pioneer in this town, in which we recently learned about, Thomas Walter DDS. He was a dentist who owned the largest parcel of land in the village. His house stretched from Wallace Street to High Street, and it had tennis courts and beautiful grounds, and belonged to the Rotary Club. He was the department head of oral surgery in Harlem Hospital. He died at Lawrence Hospital in 1980 after his passing. His property was left to his son, Warner Walter, but the land soon after was sold, and it was, has been replaced by the condominium, condominiums on Wallace Street. I also wanted to say thank you for all the people who came up and spoke about what they want to see done in Tuckahoe.
Thank you. Nice job. So I think on that note, we will adjourn. May I have a motion to close out the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Have a good night, Tuckahoe, we will see you in March.